All right, it is 7:15. Today is June 23rd, 2021. I'm going to call the Halifax Board of Selectment meeting to order. First up will do the board's meetings. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve.
So, a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, at this moment, I am going to recuse myself from the process of the appointment of the building inspector slash building commissioner because of lawsuits between myself and the town naming the building inspector and the newly filed lawsuit yesterday from Mr. Piccarelli naming myself.
Mr. Gary, I just want to make one point. I know that on the agenda, there's mention of a possible vote on the appointment of a building inspector, building commissioner. My understanding, having talked to the board earlier today, there will be no decision tonight on that appointment.
And we'll not be taking any comments from the audience. If you want to assist us and take it to one, let us forgive you.
Your first appointment's in a couple of minutes. I don't know how rigid you want to follow the schedule.
It's Robert Butler here. You wanna go with each other or do you wanna wait?
You wanna come up then, Mr. Butler? You'll need to get close to the mic. The mics are attached to the Zoom feed and they're recording for the meetings.
Hello, how are you?
How you doing?
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be the building inspector?
And just for the record, this is Mr. Robert Butler. I know it's in the minute, in the agenda, but you didn't mention it.
Well, I've been here in town for 23 years now. I don't plan on leaving. And I'd like to be part of the growth and development. I do have a grandchild here in town. And I'd like to see that through and make sure everything's going in the right direction. I've been in the trade for over 30 years. Self-employed since '93. So I think I'll fit the job pretty well. Good with people.
Do you have a construction supervisor license?
I do, yeah, unrestricted, yep.
Do you have any preconceived ideas of what the job entails?
I don't know, you know, just enforcing the codes and trying to help residents out here with their projects.
How do you deal with an irate citizen?
Excuse me?
How would you deal with an irate citizen?
You would have to, you know, calm the situation down. You can't get mad or it's just gonna blow up. So you try to just calm the situation down or remove yourself from it. You know, if need be, if it's getting that out of control.
In the 23 years you've been there, have you been to a town meeting?
I have not.
Do you own any other properties or businesses in town other than the house that you live in?
Nope.
Charlie? Whatever other questions?
Do you think that you can be fair and unbiased since you've lived here for 23 years? And I'm sure you have friends and family and colleagues in this town.
Yes, I would do the job to the bylaws, yeah.
Do you have a current conflict of interest with anybody who is a town employee or an elected official at the moment?
No.
Troy, I'll go ahead then. You ever been to a building committee meeting?
I haven't been to any meeting, any meetings.
Back to your expectations of being a building inspector. You're aware that you could be called pretty much at any time if there's any emergency in town. I know the fire chief wanted to make that clear. Are you somebody who can be readily available if there were an issue for us? You feel like you can do the job, get on the job sites?
Mm-hmm.
How well do you know the town?
Excuse me?
How well do you know the town, the streets, the areas?
I know pretty well. I've been here for a little bit, you know?
Ash?
I'm looking at Charlie's.
So, I'm not a voting member, obviously, of the board. Charlie's sitting on the town astray. Would the board grant the ability to ask a few questions of each of the candidates? Are you certified as a local inspector in Massachusetts? Or are you certified as an inspector of buildings or a building commissioner?
I am not.
What parts of the state's building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and owners? And how would you work with those people coming in with applications to reduce the difficulties they might have in meeting those standards?
Can you repeat that again?
So what parts of the state's building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and owners? And how would you work with these applicants coming in to reduce the difficulties that they might have in meeting those standards?
I try to advise them through the codes and all the paperwork we gotta go through here by getting the building permit and just try to guide them, to the best of my knowledge of what I've been through.
Whoever serves as the building inspector, commissioner of buildings is also going to serve as a town zoning enforcement officer. Do you see those roles as basically being the same or simply about different subjects, but still the same role? Or as different roles in terms of the work that needs to be done and the interactions that you have with the applicants?
I would say they're different, the zoning from the building aspect of it.
Can you talk a bit more about what the differences are?
I believe zoning would have more things to do with properties being put into different categories and to where the, you know, the building codes is where the construction, you know, you're enforcing the.
So, but is your role maybe different in one way as zoning enforcement officer than as building inspector? Or is it pretty much the same role?
I would say it would have to be, you know, the same role in a sense. You know, you still gotta go by the codes and the bylaws.
You're obviously gonna need to be working with other departments such as the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, Fire Chief, Police Chief. How would you go about creating a strong working relationship for those departments?
Just, you know, working together with them. And if there's a conflict, trying to hash them out and make it, make everything, you know, right.
The Halifax Finance Committee is working with a consultant to review the town zoning bylaws. I expect whoever serves as building inspector and zoning enforcement officer will be participating in this project. What parts of the town's current zoning bylaws need to be revised or changed? And are there subjects where, which the current bylaw does not cover? Or is the current bylaw pretty much fine as is?
I'm not too familiar with the zoning codes yet.
What role do you think that the zoning enforcement officer play in the procedures for site plan approval and for the granting of special permits and variances?
What would the role be?
Yeah, what, do you think that the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer should play any role? And so what role in terms of the site plan approvals and the approval of our lease decisions on variances and special permits?
I would have to say it would play, you know, a big role because you have to enforce, like I said, the building codes and, and the zoning codes itself. So you'd have to be a big part of it.
What's your process for enforcing, or what would be your process for enforcing the state's building code and the town zoning bylaws? So for instance, if you found that a property owner or someone else was in violation of the building code or the town's bylaws, what procedure would you follow to ensure that the property was brought into compliance? How much time would you give someone to bring that property into compliance? And under what circumstances would you decide that a stop order, a stop work order, or a cease and desist order, or daily fine should be issued?
Well, I'd approach the person and have them come down and fill out the right paperwork out. And then if they did not do that, we'd have to, with a cease and desist on it and go through the motions of, of that.
So if they.
I don't know about hitting, you know, the fines, maybe double permit fine, if that's even doable. But I need to try to guide them through the process.
But so would it matter if at least, you know, would you hold off on issuing those orders if that person was in fact in the process, for instance, to go to the planning board for site plan review? You know, you go to them, there's no site plan that you filed yet. You're in violation. You need to file a site, they file a site plan. Are you going to issue a cease and desist order while that site plan is before the planning board? Or are you going to, if you see no progress? At what point would you start doing that?
If they were, after I spoke with them, if they were continuing to do the work, you'd have to, you'd have to stop the work.
That's it, thanks.
I'm gonna answer, I asked all my questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions of the board you'd like to ask?
I'm, I'm good now, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will be making a decision at a later date. So, we'll be interested.
All right, thank you.
So we're already now ahead of schedule, whatever the board wants to do.
Change period now?
I guess I'd have to recommend you call recess for 10 or so minutes. Yeah, just, just get closer to, the mics themselves aren't part of the PA system. The mics are just attached to the Zoom. But one of the reasons why we turned the AC off was because of that noise. What is the next important? 7:40 with Mr. Perry. Take a 10-minute recess.
Are you Mr. Perry?
Yes.
We're ready for you, you're ready? Hello. I'm Ashley, this is Troy.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Glad to have me. Yes?
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be the building inspector?
Uh, yeah.
Just try to talk right into the microphone so that they can hear you through all this.
Okay. Yeah, I've been in the building business my whole entire life, my career. Been in the building, residential and commercial. Went to White North Institute of Technology, got a degree from there. Went into the family business, ran that for many years. Was a clerk who works in the town of Bridgewater for about a year and a half on a project. Also, after that, I went in the business on my own, doing residential developments and new construction, renovations and flip houses, basically. And I always had it in my mind at some point down the line to transition into some type of inspector's job. And this came available. And I think I'm at a point in my career now that between all my experience and knowledge, I think it's a good fit.
Do you currently have a construction supervisor license?
Yes, I do.
And are you certified as a local inspector?
I have two certifications out of three at this point. I have one more exam to take.
How do you deal with an individual who's upset which you've become a decision you made? See, it's only, it's only a question.
Yeah, I, I think that the job itself, the zoning end, is probably gonna be the most difficult. You know, the facts are the facts. I mean, if they're, if they're in violation and they get upset, I mean, you know, try to handle it like gentlemen. You have to send letters and get into that. You know, at some point, you may have to get town attorneys involved in some of these zoning issues.
What's your expectation of being the building inspector?
My expectation?
What do you think the job entails? Are you okay with being called if there's an emergency and being able to show up and be present?
Yep. I know the inspectors that I've been associated with in the past say there's a fire in the middle of the night. You have to go out to the fire scene, assess the building, you know, condemn it, vacate it, whatnot. It's just, you know, one of the aspects, and you have the zoning aspects of the job. Violations and other things of that nature. Obviously, the construction inspections. I'm not sure in this town if the inspector is to the plumbing and electrical work underneath the inspector. Is he the department head in this town?
He's also the zoning enforcement officer.
Zoning enforcement officer, right. So, you know, there's a lot of facets to the job, obviously.
Do you think you could handle the zoning aspect of it?
Yes.
As well as the building?
Yep.
Do you own any property or businesses in the town of Halifax?
No, I do not.
And do you have any conflict of interest with any town employees or elected officials here?
No, I do not.
Can you read bylaws, interpret bylaws?
Yes, I can.
Have you done that before?
Yeah. I served on the Board of Health in Bridgewater for nine years as well. We did all our housing issues over there.
Charlie had a few that we had written down. The Halifax Finance Committee is working with a consultant to review the town zoning bylaws. We expect that whoever serves as building inspector and zoning enforcement officer will participate in this project. What part of the town's current bylaws need to be revised or changed? And are there subjects of the current bylaws that does not cover, but should? Or do you feel the bylaws are fine as is? Have you had time to look at the top?
I have not read, I have not read the zoning bylaws in the town of Halifax.
Would you feel comfortable having to revise or leave alone? Or?
Yeah.
Work with finance to do that?
I think it's a good policy from time to time to review all bylaws and get them up to speed with the conditions that are happening in the world. Because things are changing rapidly as we know.
Chair, you mentioned, so you're part of the way towards being a local inspector.
Correct.
But, and after that, you would be applying, going through the process to get the certification as a building commissioner?
Correct, additional free tests.
Yeah. So what parts of the state's building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and owners? How would you work with them to reduce the difficulties that they might have in meeting those standards?
The, the energy codes are moving pretty rapidly. And it's very difficult to almost bring the new homes into compliance. The, the new homes that we're building today are very, very airtight. And there are blow a door tests that they require you to do. And sometimes it's very difficult to meet those standards.
In terms, we talked a little about the zoning bylaw, we talked about the building code. Obviously, whoever's serving as the building inspector is also serving as a zoning enforcement officer. Do you think that the roles that you play in those two positions are different? Or pretty much the same, but it's a little different subject matter? That are outside.
I, I think building and zoning are obviously two different issues. But they, they obviously overlap in areas which it's helpful to be, the inspector is also the zoning enforcement officer as well.
What procedures would you follow when performing inspections? How does on-the-job safety and OSHA standards interact with the inspection process?
Well, all jobs should be maintained in a safe condition for inspection services as well as general public and the workers as well. OSHA, you know, besides commercial projects, we don't see OSHA around residential projects that often. Unless there's an event that happens where somebody gets injured. So I would say mostly in the commercial areas where, where the OSHA is enforced strictly.
When would you expect that the building inspector would need to work with other departments such as the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the Fire Chief and Police Chief? How would you go about creating a strong working relationship with those departments?
Yeah, when I was on the Board of Health in Bridgewater, they were, all the departments worked very closely together. Especially in small towns, that's, that's how you get, you know, things done and squared away. So everybody needs to kind of be in lockstep and, you know, helping one another with the issues that they face.
What role do you think the zoning officers should play in the procedures for site plan approval and for the granting of special permits and variances?
As far as variant variances go, I think the building inspector should just kind of direct the zoning board as to what the facts are. And, you know, it's very important that the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer stays neutral in that process. I don't think that we should be rendering opinions. I think you should be giving facts. As far as site plan goes, we review site plans all the time. And, you know, any necessary input should be put in at that time at the review process when the planning board's going through their procedure.
And what would be your process for enforcing the state's building code and the town zoning bylaws? So for instance, we have a property owner or someone else in violation of the code or the bylaws. What procedure would you follow to ensure that the property is brought into compliance? And how much time would you give people to do so before starting the process of issuing, for instance, a stop work order or a cease and desist order or a daily fine?
I think, I think each, each situation is a case by case as far as, you know, the emergency effect of the non-compliance. So I think you really have to look at case by case. And depending on how, how much an emergency it is, and obviously you'd have to put more of an effort and more teeth into, you know, your, your reasoning for getting them in compliance. Thank you.
Any questions of us?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll be making a decision at a later date.
Okay, very good. Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
I'm sorry, I lost so much time between the plates. This is our next one today.
No. Turner?
Is this a Turner here?
All right.
We can see you now if you want.
So this is Paul Turner. I like clinical audience.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thanks.
I'm Ashley. Ashley, Mr. Gary?
All right.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be Halifax building inspector?
I've been in construction my whole life. I worked on my dad when I was 10, 12, 13 years old. Had a concrete business for 25 years, flat work. I moved on to developing land, building houses. I built over 100 houses the past 17 years. I've been the local inspector in Bridgewater for the past five years. I enjoy that position. I like it in Bridgewater, it's very busy. And I'd like to move up. I'd like to be a commissioner, have my own town, set my own.
So do you currently have a construction supervisor license?
Yes.
Are you certified as a local inspector?
Yes, I am.
What is your expectation of this job? Do you have any?
As far as.
Are you okay with being on call, having to show up at emergencies?
Oh, I am now in Bridgewater, not a problem. I enjoy going out, actually.
Do you own any properties or businesses here in town?
I own a small little piece on Franklin Street in Backland. I think that's it.
Do you have any conflicts of interest with any Halifax town employees or elected officials?
No.
Are you able to read and enforce bylaws?
Absolutely.
Chair Finance Committee won. So the Halifax Finance Committee is working with a consultant to review the town's zoning bylaws. Have you had time to look at our bylaws?
No.
I asked this question?
No.
Okay, so let's just start there. Do you feel comfortable being able to look at them and work with a consultant to possibly revamp or change? Maybe not change at all, decide what the town needs bylaws are?
Perfect.
We expect the building inspector to work with other departments such as Board of Health, Conservation, Fire Chief, Police Chief. How would you go about creating a strong working relationship with these departments?
Introduce myself, go out on inspections together, especially with the Fire Department. Board of Health, same thing, when a permit comes in, walk over, talk to them about it. I've dealt with, on the, on my end, as far as developing property, I've dealt with all those boards, GBA, Planning Board, Town Administrators, Selectmen.
How would you deal with a property owner or someone who is in violation of a code or bylaw? What procedure would you follow to ensure the property is brought to compliance? How much time would you give somebody to get the property in compliance before you do a stop work order, things of that nature?
Best thing to do is head out, knock on the door, talk to the person. Take a look, walk outside, say it's, say it's a shed that's too close to the property owner. Go out and take a look at it. Explain to them that, you know, the Nava doesn't like it, it's a little too close. It's whatever the setback is in Halifax. Show them that it'd be relatively easy to move a shed. And just talk it up. Again, if they come to a point that they don't want to hear it, they don't want to go inside, they don't want to be off the property, then you can go through, you know, send a letter, certify letter, see to the process.
What if it's a situation where there's people working a job without a site plan or something of that nature?
I run into it all the time in Bridgewater, almost daily. You stop, introduce yourself. If the contract is like, yeah, I know it, I'm good, I'll pick up, I'll stop. And I'm like, okay, then please apply online. Won't be a double fine, apply the longest I see that permit. And I go into the office the next month, the next morning, and it's paid for. And I give them a one and done. If I get out of the truck, walk over and like, oh, what do you mean, I need a permit for windows or a permit for a roof? You know, you're talking to a guy that's been in the business for 30 years. That's when I get a little bit tripped. If it proceeds, then I say, now. If it proceeds, then I say, "Now..." I look usually at the workers, I say. Because of your boss's attitude, you're gonna lose a day's pay. Everyone go home. Double fine. And then next time that guy comes to Bridgewater, he knows.
Charlie, do you want to?
That's where I got left here. Obviously, you're certified as a local inspector. Are you certified as a building inspector or just a local inspector?
Just a local.
But obviously you'd work towards that if you were appointed as building.
Wouldn't be a problem.
What parts of the state's building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and owners? And how would you work with them to reduce the difficulties that they might have in meeting those standards?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. So what parts of the state's building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and owners? And how would you work with them to reduce difficulties that they might have in meeting those standards?
Most of the framers out there now could build in single-family homes. Very familiar with it, especially the Winton. I had no issues with them. The issues I mostly have, and again, it's not developers, it's all builders. One of the biggest problems in Bridgewater is the right of a property owner to take out their own permit. Which is fine. And during the pandemic, I issued over 1,200 permits during that time. And a lot of it was for basements. So people were at home like, "Oh, I'm gonna finish my basement." But just because they had the right to pull the permit and look a little bit on YouTube of how to build it, I had so many issues. So especially in Bridgewater, a basement remodel can be one of the most dangerous rooms in your house. Because if it's not properly draft-started, you could have an electrical fire. Again, a homeowner can do their own electrical work. You could have a plug fire over here. If it's not draft-started, it can travel behind the wall. Go over here, up the wall. People are sleeping on the second floor. Time that gets going over here, there's no smoke coming out because it's in behind the wall. Very dangerous. So that I try, it's nothing I can do about the code, but I try to work with those people over and over and over. Some inspections, some sites I've gone to, six, seven, eight, nine times. Try to educate. I do educate.
That basically rolls right into one of the other questions I had, which was, what procedures do you follow when you're doing inspections? And how do job safety issues and OSHA standards come into play when you're doing those inspections?
In Bridgewater, let's see, Long Built is, they've just did a 100-lot subdivision. They're a very professional company. So I hadn't had none of those types of issues. All the roofs were tied off. The siding companies were tied off. Again, I didn't really run into that. Again, maybe with the homeowners. Yes.
Whoever's going to serve as the building inspector is also going to be serving as zoning enforcement officer. Do you see those as two different roles, sort of performing different functions? Or is it basically the same role, but it's simply two different subjects, one the building code, one the zoning bylaws? Your interactions are different or not?
No. They're intermingled. If a permit comes in, the first thing you do is check it out before you even read too much further.
What role do you think that the zoning enforcement officer should play in the procedures for site plan approvals and for the granting of special permits and variances?
I think the plan should be, when it's presented to the planning board or the ZBA, the copy should be brought right to the building department, if not first. You give a lot of directions to the person. I can just pick up on it. You can just see right from the beginning before they're wasting their time going in front of the ZBA or planning board with their engineer, with their lawyer.
I would ask you about enforcement, but I think you've already covered that subject already through your answers in a sense of, and what really is going to be a question, but what point, when you see a problem occurring in terms of a violation of zoning bylaw or the building code, obviously you step in, but how much time do you give that developer or that homeowner to correct the problem before saying, "Okay, it's time for a cease-and-desist. It's time for a stop order" or even "It's time for, I have to impose daily fines"?
I'll give you an example. I went out to a large subdivision for an inspection on just right by the house. And there was a pool without the proper barriers and without a permit. So that took immediate. So I went right to that, knocked on the door. Homeowner, contractor was there. We stopped it. I did not leave until that was... I mean, we get plywood. It was a above-ground pool with aluminum fence around it. They were buddying against the deck. The deck was open right to the house. No barrier, no alarm, no gate going up in steps. So I stayed there two hours while they put a plywood barrier across. And at that point, I had to talk with the contractor, the homeowner. First order of business was a permit. Permit that night came in. Next day it was a double fine. I issued it. I gave them one week to build the deck, make the barrier, get the gate, get an alarm on the house. I monitored that job daily. So something like that. You gotta give them a little bit of time. You can't just put a sticker on the door and just go out and gamble. You want the problem fixed. You don't want them to leave. Other examples would be someone doing a roof without a permit. You have to be to the point where the homeowner, they assume the contractor has a permit. See rains coming, a forecast at night, you're not going to kick them off. But again, permit, double fine, monitor. And also, you have to talk to them and let them know, say, "That's not the way. You want a permit in Bridgewater? I'll give you a permit in a day." Don't, you know, just don't do it. And it does work. Obviously, there's not all of them follow your advice. There's always a couple of repeat offenders, but definitely.
Known individuals. Great, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, no, no.
Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Floyd was scheduled for 8:20. He had sent in a note to the board about 7 o'clock saying he was withdrawing his application, so he's not coming in. I don't know if the board wants, if Mr. Frederickson is next at 8:40. I don't know if the board wants to take another recess, or I don't know if Mr. Frederickson is here. We're scheduled for 8:40. Sorry, I think it's only fair. There's dead air. I'm sorry, dead time. So we've got another 20 minutes. Yes, we've got dead air for a while. So do you want to call another recess for about, well, unfortunately, it's going to be about 35 minutes.
Mr. Picaurelli, would you like to go? And then maybe we'll call it 10-minute recess and then maybe he'll be here.
Well, we'll take a break for a little time to take. Mr. Turner, just so you know, we won't be making the decision tonight on this position. We won't be able to be making a decision tonight on the position, so it's up to you to take that home.
Nope, that's the secret. Thank you. We're ready for you if you want to come by.
Hi, I'm Ashley.
How you doing, Ashley? How you doing, Charlie?
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to interview for the building inspector job?
Say that one more time, sorry.
Do you want to tell us about yourself and why you want to interview the building inspector?
Yeah, so I work for Mass Save. I do the energy assessments, residential energy assessments. And I had a good friend of mine, Brendan Elliott, recently tell me about the position opening. And, you know, just gave me the basics of the rundown of the job. And I figured I have experience doing energy assessments, going into people's houses, dealing with codes for ventilation, insulation, checking out heating systems. I got a little bit of an electrical background. I went to South Shore Botec High School and took electrical, did electrical for a few years too. So I have experience in the field. It's one of the main reasons why I want to actually try to get the job.
All right, so do you currently hold a construction supervisor license or an inspector license?
I do not. I do have a building performance institution, so a BPI ID. I had to get qualified. I had to do all the certifications to that, which is about, I want to say about three months it took to get the license, just to have the position I'm in.
What are your expectations of being the building inspector? And do you understand the commitment of it, that you can be called at any time?
Yep. Yeah, I understand that. And actually, for my job at this moment, I get called. I leave my work phone in the truck at the moment, just so, you know, it wasn't blowing up while I'm in here. I really want to just, I grew up in Halifax. I lived on South Street for 25 years. I just moved out last year. I moved to Pembroke, bought a house there. I love Halifax, you know, growing up here, playing baseball, just all the sports. I love the community. I've got a lot of friends here. And I know, I just want to see the town grow. That's really my main concern. I just want to make sure everything's done right, properly.
Do you have any properties here or businesses here in Halifax?
No, outside of like just some of my current job, just customers that I deal with, you know, in town. I have family that lives there still, so.
Do you feel that you can be unbiased?
Yeah, 100%.
Work with your friends, your family, all of that. Do you have any conflicts with anybody in Halifax right now, town employees or elected officials?
Not that I'm aware of, nothing at all.
Have you ever had to read a town's bylaws and interpret them and...
Not so much, but when it comes to like the Mass Save, going back to my job right now, I gotta, you know, we have to always pull permits to do certain jobs. Every town, you gotta go, you know, basically to get them. So I don't know like the specifics of everything, but I mean, I've read enough to know the basics of it.
Do you want to ask anything, Charlie? Do you have any? Do you want me to go down this list?
Yep.
So we already asked about the building commissioner license. Let's see, so the building inspector here is also the zoning enforcement officer. And I know we have two of those questions, Charlie. Do you see these roles as basically being the same, but simply about being different subjects or two different roles in terms of the work that needs to be done and the interactions which you'll have with applicants?
I mean, it's all gonna be the same to me. I mean, it's part of the job, so if I have to do it, I have to do it. Like I said, I really just know basics of everything. I'm willing to learn. That's really my main thing right there.
We would expect the building inspector needs to work with other departments such as the Board of Health, Conservation, Fire Chief, Police Chief. How would you go about creating a strong work relationship with these departments?
That's like I do everything. Just really comes down to just being friendly, being nice, having the same interests and trying, if you don't have the same interests, try to work it out so, you know, both parties win.
We know that you haven't read the bylaws in Halifax, but the Finance Committee is going to be working with the consultant to review them. The building inspector and zoning enforcement officer will participate in the project to rewrite or revamp, revise or not revise. Is that something that you think you would be able to do, read the bylaws, see as?
Yep, not a problem really for me. Goes back to just my days doing electrical work. I mean, when I was trying to become an electrician before I went to college, you're reading the code book every day. I mean, at least when I was, you know, in school for it. So it's something that, you know, it might not be the funnest thing, to be honest, but hey, it's part of the job and you gotta do it. You gotta learn it. You gotta understand it. And it is what it is.
Charlie, you want to touch on any of the other?
So what parts of the state's building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and for homeowners? And how would you work with them to reduce the difficulties that they might have in meeting the standards of the building code?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I'm gonna answer this correctly or not, but I mean, I've seen like a lot of houses like down on South Street, in that general area, where it's like a lot of wetland down there. And I've noticed a lot of people have been trying to, you know, build down there for many years, for 20-plus years now. And that always seems to be the biggest issue. I mean, if that's the case, what are you gonna do? It's wetland. You can't build on it, so. But really, I mean, I guess you gotta find some like groundwork to, I don't know, to like figure it out, I guess. I mean, I don't know if that really answers your question, but.
What procedures would you follow when performing inspections? And how does on-the-job safety and the OSHA standards interact with the inspection process?
Say that one more time, sorry.
What procedures would you follow when you're performing inspections? And how does on-the-job safety issues and OSHA standards interact with the inspection process?
Well, there's a process for everything to do, doing that kind of stuff. It really comes down to like, is there any previous history of any like step-by-step way of like training to learn how to do that? I mean, it really comes down to common sense at that point where it's, there's gotta be a way to do it and then you just gotta go about doing it that way. Yeah, I mean, that's really all I got there.
What role should the zoning enforcement officer play in the procedures for site plan approval and for the granting of?
Say that one more time, sorry.
What role should the zoning enforcement officer play in the procedures for site plan approval and for the granting of special permits and variances?
He should basically make sure everything's done correctly, if I'm not mistaken, right? I mean, just make sure everything's by the book, by code. Make sure it's run smoothly and properly. That's really it.
And what's your process or what you would tend to do in enforcing the state's building code and the town zoning bylaws? So that, for instance, if you had a property owner or someone in violation of the code or the bylaws, what procedure would you follow to ensure the property is brought into compliance? How much time would you give that person to bring them to compliance? And under what circumstances would you use, you know, a stop order or a cease-and-desist order or even a daily fine as part of that enforcement process?
First and foremost, you try to be as friendly as possible when you're doing certain things like that. I mean, I talked to him or her, try to work it out. If that's the case, I mean, it really comes down to, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's a certain timetable that's actually, you know, written in somewhere that you have to get it done by. And if it's really coming up to that, I mean, you don't want to be, lack of a better term, like mean or anything, but you want to basically let them know that like, hey, this is the point. If it gets to this deadline at this certain day, then that's it. Like, that's when you have to be the bad guy, I guess.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
I did. Yeah, so back to just being in Halifax and everything. When do you guys plan on filling the position roughly? Because I'm actually getting married Friday, and obviously I'm going away for a little bit, not a long time, but.
It's strange as to the move of many decisions.
I just, I just know, I just, well, put it this way, the interview process came out very fast. When I put in, you know, everything and, I, you know, just moving forward, I want to make sure.
It'll be, it won't be this week.
Yeah, okay, I mean, it's, yeah, okay, that's fine. Fair enough. I just, I'm gonna go out of the country, so that's why, not gonna have my phone on me.
Well, thank you for your time here tonight.
I appreciate it, guys, thank you. Thank you.
Want to tell us about you?
Sure, I've been a resident of Halifax approximately 30 years. I was self-employed for a number of years. I had my own business, again, probably pushing 30 some odd years. I've been the local inspector for this town for 15, and I've been the building commissioner of this town for six years.
All right, do you currently have a current construction supervisor license?
My construction supervisor's license is being renewed as we speak. It's unnecessary in my position because the local inspector and building commissioner's license are considered a higher education. So the construction supervisor's license would be paying the state another $100 where it's not necessary.
Okay, and do you have your inspector of buildings and building commissioner license?
I have my, yes, I'm certified building commissioner.
All right. I'm sure you know the expectation of the job.
I'm familiar with it.
Do you own any properties or businesses in town?
I own two properties in town currently. I own my primary residence, which I live in, and I own a property that has apartments on it.
And do you have any conflict with any Halifax town employees or elected officials?
I don't have any conflict, but I have filed disclosure papers.
Are you able to read and enforce town bylaws? And we can mix paths with this question of if you feel that you're confident to work with the finance committee on revamping the current Halifax bylaws?
So I do work with the bylaw every day. I've worked with it for approximately 20 some odd years, six years under commissioners. I'd love to be involved with the revamping or rewriting of the town bylaws. I believe that my opinion from when I started this job was that there are a lot of inconsistencies and conflicting language in it that needs to be addressed.
How do you feel, this is weird because he does the job, but do you see the roles as the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer being the same or different? What is your take on the two different positions?
It's the same position, but there's different aspects. Building and zoning intertwine every day. It depends on the individual case and what's being presented. But as far as the position, it's, it's one position, as well as other codes. I mean, I, my, my position intertwines with the board of health, the fire department. These codes overlap in multiple areas.
What's your process for enforcing the state's building codes and the town's zoning bylaws? For instance, if a property owner had a violation, what would your procedure be to ensure the property is brought to compliance? And how much time would you give somebody before the circumstances should stop work or cease and desist, fine, etc.?
So in my position, I've always taken the stance that I'm not the finding, I'm not the finding officer, I'm the enforcement officer. My job is to bring or have people come into compliance. Sometimes that's difficult because people don't understand the codes, they don't understand the zoning bylaws. If I have to address them, I, I send out a letter usually, or I'll go and ask permission to speak to them. If they give me permission to speak to them, I'll try to explain the zoning bylaws and/or building codes. If they have further questions, I can show them in the codes what it says and where it is. I will write them letters indicating where they're lacking or where they need to come into compliance. I'll give them the ability, if they don't like it, to appeal my decision. So my job, again, is to work with the public every day and to help the public understand what these codes and bylaws are.
What role do you think the zoning enforcement officer should play in the procedures for site plan approval and for the granting of special permits and variances?
So as far as zoning is concerned, again, it's gonna depend on the application that comes in. If it's a commercial building or a commercial application, or whether it's a residential application. My role is to make sure it meets zoning compliance. As far as site plan is considered, it would fall under our zoning bylaw and in planning. And again, it's, it's specific to the application or what's being presented as to how it would be addressed.
What procedures do you follow when you're performing inspections? And how's the on-the-job safety issues and OSHA standards interact with the inspection process?
So the inspection process is part of the building code, to meet the building code in its written form. As far as OSHA is concerned, there's certain, there's certain safety standards within the building code that apply a lot to, for example, what you mentioned, construction. If it's a commercial job, there's a lot of problems with safety railings, stairs, lifts, equipment, things along those lines. But only certain things will fall on the building code. There's a, there's a section in the, in the commercial building code that's specifically dedicated to construction. So if it falls within that code, that would be my jurisdiction. If it falls outside of that code, I would certainly have the ability to contact OSHA, have OSHA come in and they would deal with it on their own.
And what parts of the state building code have you found to be the most onerous for developers and for homeowners? How would you work with them to reduce the difficulties that they might have in meeting those standards?
So again, standards are difficult, developers, owners, different situations. I find in the residential code where the owner might be dealing with something they're doing on their own, they have the ability to pull their own permits. A lot of times, they don't know what's involved in the code or how the code applies. I'm dealing with that every day. Homeowners are coming in and pulling permits. I ask them specific questions pertinent to the permit. I guide them through it. If they have questions on the code, I cite the code, I show them where it is in the code. I go out and I do inspections, and if, if it's lacking, I will help them to, to meet the procedures and the regulations. If it's a commercial code, now, a developer, it could be both. A developer could be in the commercial and/or residential. So that's, that's dealt with differently. In the commercial code, again, the building code is, is very difficult because it's constantly evolving. Every three years, supposedly every three years, the code gets adjusted. The BBRF has fallen behind, so we're around four or five years before the new code from the 2015. I think they're talking about 22 possibly for some new codes coming in, but it's constantly evolving. It takes constant education because it is evolving. So a lot of times, these people aren't keeping up to date with it. So as far as what part of the building code is most onerous, onerous, I think the whole code is, is onerous. Because we're dealing with the International Code Council, which is now the IBC, which is the International Building Code, and the IRC, which is the International Residential Code. Excuse me, I'll take a sip of water. There's also Massachusetts amendments that follow those codes that are different. So you need to go into the code book, you need to follow the Massachusetts amendments, and then you have to go back into past building codes and amendments if something falls under an existing building code. So it's very difficult because, again, existing buildings have different treatment under the existing building code. Commercial buildings fall under the commercial building code or base code, residential falls under the residential. So it's a very confusing and onerous process for anybody that would be involved. And a lot of times, with continuing education, you'll see architects and engineers at the same continuing education. So it, it's something that's always evolving. So I think that's the simplest answer I can give.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm set. There's, in terms of questions, we did receive some correspondence, but I'll move on to that once the board is finished. Okay, anything you want to ask of us?
No, I've been here for 21 years, I think I'm familiar with the process. I would like to thank the people that are sitting in the audience in support of me.
Thank you. So Troy, we had received letters from Free People Allison Vance from Alotta Snow and from myself in terms of statements concerning Rob. They all asked for them to be read into the record. Do you want me to read them, or how would you, like, handle that?
You can read it.
So this one is from Allison Vance. Dear members of the board of selectmen, I'm writing this letter to express my concern over the reappointment of our current building inspector, Mr. Petrelli. At the, at the initial town meeting this year held on May 10th, a woman in the audience stood up to ask why our building inspector was receiving a raise when we were giving a 0% to almost all our other town employees due to pandemic year. Mr. Seel explained that according to Mass General Law, the building inspector was entitled to step increase per his contract with an accepted evaluation. And sent Mr. Seelig a request for those evaluations, which I assume would not be permitted to be raised. But I was equally interested in seeing the dates of those completed evaluations and who had signed off on them. Mr. Seelig responded 10 business days later to let me know that he had misspoke at the town meeting. I'll just say I didn't misspeak, I believe that somebody else heard something that I didn't say. And is not Mass General Laws that requires the step increases to be paid, but is written somewhere in our town's wage and personnel bylaws. Did not provide that language from those bylaws in his email to me. He also informed me that Mr. Petrelli was appointed by the board of selectmen to be the building inspector in 2015. He did have an evaluation done in 2016 and 2017 that were signed off by the member of the board of selectmen, that was not his business associate, Mr. Yes, and both of those evaluations resulted in a step increase in pay. However, what I find concerning is that Mr. Petrelli was given a change in grade pay increase from grade 10 to grade 11 at a town meeting in 2018. That that town meeting selectman Milius was asked to explain why he brought forth the positions of building inspector and board of health agent to receive this large pay grade increase. Mr. Milius, who is a business associate of Mr. Petrelli, spoke at length about why he felt those two positions deserve a raise, which had nothing to do with evaluations or competency of work. I, along with several community members, find that to be a huge conflict of interest. But perhaps the most concerning of all is that Mr. Seelig was unable to find any evaluation done in 2019 and 2020. The result ended building inspector's step increase in pay. It's come to my attention that Mr. Petrelli and his council believe he deserves to be reappointed our town's building inspector, but without any evaluations completed in the last three years, how are you to make that determination? After hearing numerous complaints about him from community members in the past few months, how does it seem ethical to reappoint him without having anything to back it up? As a taxpayer of this town, it only makes sense to me that the position of building inspector be opened up to see if there are better suited candidates. I believe the reason we have town elections every year is to make the changes necessary for our community to move forward. Then we have, the next letter is from Alotta Snow. My name is Alotta Snow, and I've held the position of Halifax zoning board of appeals secretary for over four years. I first met my boss, Halifax zoning enforcement officer and building commissioner, Robert Petrelli, at, on April 3rd, 2017, when he interviewed me for the position. If you can bear with me, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born with osteogenesis imperfecta, a brittle bone condition that has prevented me from ever walking, thus confining me to a wheelchair. OI has also caused me to break over 500 bones, giving me severe scoliosis as a reason for my short stature. Although I was never able to do the obvious things like play school sports, drive a car, or ride a roller coaster, I've never felt less than any other staple-bodied person or felt I was missing out on the greatest parts of life. Sure, I faced and continue to face obstacles, but I find my way around them. I have always been very determined. I'm told I am upbeat, why shouldn't I be? I'm lucky in so many ways, and every stage of my life happened. After working as a part-time office manager of Pembroke Country Club through high school, I went on to graduate with a bachelor of science degree from Bryan University in Business Management and Communications. After graduating, I secured a position as a staff accountant for a forensic CPA firm in Hingham, Mass. Until one day, they informed me that they needed me to travel off into their location in New York City's financial district. It was tough for me to let go, as I loved this job, but I knew that this wasn't something I could control. I began to interview for other positions. Finding a job for most isn't a simple task. Finding a job with a disability like mine proved a little more challenging. However, with my experience and education, I knew where I should be and where I wanted to be. Eventually, although I was a bit overqualified, I accepted a bookkeeping position for H&R Block Enterprises. Although it wasn't the job I hoped for, I wanted to work, and my coworkers were wonderful. When H&R Block closed their accounting center six years later, all 200 of us were laid off. Back to the drawing board, I promise there's a point here, stay with me. I began interviewing again, this time was a bit more difficult than the last. I was determined to find the perfect job, and I thought I did. I didn't tell many people about the seven months after H&R Block that I worked as a treasury analyst for the new startup insurance company out of Norwell, Mass. The company transitioned soon-to-be retirees from their current employer's insurance to Medicare and supplemental insurance plans. I was hired by the CEO, who presented himself as an intelligent, hard-working, honest professional. I worked my tail off and was quickly rewarded, until the CEO hired his wife as CFO, my direct boss, and an executive assistant. I had never in my life experienced discrimination before. If I had, I was never affected by it and don't remember it. In fact, I don't recognize that the mistreatment I was tolerating from those two individuals, my other coworkers were appalled and immediately stood up for me. For months was indeed discrimination in its truest form. I left and never looked back. I thought I'd been through the worst of it, but the experience I had in many interviews that followed proved to be much worse. My usual, I can do anything, nothing will get me down or stand in my way attitude quickly changed. I felt defeated and unworthy of any job. I always thought discrimination was a thing of the past, but it's very much alive and it is very powerful. I experienced it from HR personnel to managers to supervisors to CEOs of small companies and large corporations alike. I've turned my interview experiences into funny stories, my self-preservation technique, because I no longer feel defined by those ignorant, insufferable people. The reason I can do so, in a nutshell, is because Mr. Petrelli, the regulatory supervisor, building inspector and zoning enforcement officer of your town. I'm not a resident of Halifax, but I've lived in East Bridgewater, one of Halifax's abutting towns, my entire life. I live just 10 minutes away from Halifax's Town Hall. I've always thought of Halifax and East Bridgewater as an extension of each other. I'm familiar with Halifax as I am with my hometown and feel at home in either place. Having seen the ZVA secretary posted on your town's digital bulletin board while driving by the Halifax Fire Station one day, I told myself to keep pushing, so I gave it my best shot, even though I was exhausted. I was, I will, I will always remember when I rolled into meeting room one of Halifax Town Hall in April, that I was greeted so warmly by Mr. Petrelli. I never forget that he immediately walked over to me and shook my hand without flinching or hesitating. He gave me a smile so genuine and friendly, and not in the condescending way I'd sadly become used to, that I was immediately put at ease. The first time, I felt like myself in an interview. We talked with ease, I didn't question every word that came out of my mouth, wondering if it was the right thing to say or if I was making a good impression. Mr. Petrelli asked me about me and seemed truly interested in my answers. He listened instead of seemingly, seeming distracted by my wheelchair, as so many others had. He treated me no differently than anyone else, which is what I had been striving for my whole professional working life. I told myself going in not to get my hopes up, not like me, but I left the town hall that day unable to stop myself. I was hired soon after with a call from him. I will never forget when I answered the phone to hear, "I, Alotta, this is Robert Petrelli from Halifax Town Hall. I'd be honored if you would join our regulatory team as zoning board secretary." And the rest, as they say, is history. Over the last four years, I've worked closely with him. Although I have some experience reading plans, I worked for a concrete firm company off and on during college breaks. firm company off and on during college breaks and between jobs. No one has more patience with or taught me more than Mr. Petrelli. He always answers my questions, of which I have many, and he listens when I'm frustrated and always helps me figure things out. Never hesitates to compliment my work and encourages me when I need it most. He puts his trust in me and gives me confidence, which I had lost along the way. I've seen this be true with everyone he comes in contact with. My desk is positioned in the doorway of the zoning office, directly across from the building department. This allows me to hear and see who comes in and out of his office. Because of this, I have watched countless people walk in the building department with worrying and concern that's on their faces, with no idea where to begin with their project or how to complete it. Some people are bursting with frustration or anger because of something that they may have gone wrong with their projects and or property. Many too seem to have a million questions. Some people come in with their families, friends, builders, realtors, sometimes even with their big attitudes. And then I hear it. His jovial voice offering that warm welcome greeting that never fails. This almost immediately puts people at ease. He can calm down the most upset people. He gives hope to the hopeless. He delivers not so great or hard to understand news in the clearest, most professional, confident, most honest and compassionate ways. Never seen anyone leave angry after speaking with Mr. Petrelli. If he does not, if he doesn't, if he does not, doesn't have the answer, which is rare, he finds it. He doesn't put people off. He doesn't play favorites. He is fair when he is able to be, but when he has to make a tough decision, he makes it. When he must take action, he takes it. It is rare to find someone with the strength, dedication, knowledge, ability and personality to be a building inspector, zoning enforcement officer and supervisor, but Mr. Petrelli does it all with the exceptional poise, humility and professionalism. Mr. Petrelli is dedicated to this town, is loyal to his fellow residents, and only does what is in the best interest of your community and its bylaws. I see it every single day. He's truly decent human being. He treats everyone with respect and when he doesn't get that respect in return, or even when he doesn't get that respect in return. I've admired him since the day I met him for all these reasons and more. Mr. Petrelli not only helped me find my confidence and determination to succeed, but he made me believe in myself again. He makes Halifax a better place. Any town should be so lucky. Then I have sent a letter to the board today. During the six years that Mr. Petrelli has been building inspector for the town of Halifax, he's performed ably for the town. He has obtained a certification as building inspector, building commissioner, as required by law, and has continued to hone his knowledge, the training sessions run by the state Massachusetts official association, building official associations. He knows enough to go back to the reference book when a question comes up for which he does not have an immediate answer and will consult with others when the occasion arises instead of relying just on his own knowledge. Mr. Petrelli played a material role in the success of the town's renovation project at the Halifax Elementary School during the summer of '27 with the roof project, the summer of '28, the siding doors and windows, and the summer of '29 with the fire suppression system. Along with performing his normal work inspecting the project, he attended numerous meetings each summer in connection with each phase of the project and offered suggestions as how solved problems developed or were uncovered as the work progressed. He has continued this type of involvement with other municipal projects and his advice has always been welcomed. I understand that at times Mr. Petrelli has to say no to applicants and anyone else seeking to construct a project in Halifax. That's an inherent part of the job and it tends to be a part of the job for many department heads. It makes for a certain amount of unpopularity. However, Mr. Petrelli, Mr. Petrelli has worked with applicants and others to show why state and local statutes and regulations prevent a project from being done in a certain way, and also works with those individuals to show what options are available to them. If the board is considering not reappointing Mr. Petrelli as building inspector due, due to the lack of annual evaluations, then the board should fulfill its responsibility as Mr. Petrelli's appointing authority and conduct an evaluation as detailed in the town's wage and personnel law, bylaw, before making a decision on continuing Mr. Petrelli's employment with the town. If the board is considering not reappointing Mr. Petrelli as building inspector because of complaints filed against him, including but not limited to the standards of conduct, appropriate conduct, and a list of actions, including those in the disciplinary policy outlined in the town's wage and personnel employee handbook, then the board should conduct an investigation into those complaints, interview all the interested parties, including the complainants and Mr. Petrelli, review the evidence presented in the complaints, and determine whether the complaints are justified and, if so, what disciplinary action should be taken. All this done before making a decision about whether to reappoint Mr. Petrelli as building inspector. These are Mr. Petrelli's work for the town. I highly recommend that the board select and reappoint him as building inspector.
That's what I got. I want to thank all the advocates that came in tonight to make a presentation to the board, and hopefully in the near future will make a decision on who will be in the position for the town. Thank you for coming out tonight. And if you feel, feel forward to write letters in support or not support, it's up to you.
Troy, you'll need to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.